Thirty, let's call the October twenty eighth, ready to hold good meeting order.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yeah.
Commissioner Easter.
He's excuse.
Commissioner Newman.
Your.
Commissioner Eustace.
Here.
Commissioner Claremont.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yeah. Six oh and one excuse. Uh, we have under six B, we're gonna pull that fair update. Out of the. Fix B. How about a motion then to approve the agenda?
Well, the application.
Pardon me? Oh yeah, details. Thank you, Mike. Let's stand for the agenda. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Sheboygan County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf and the good of all. This we pray in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States. To the free and healthy. And. What is. It's all. Thank you, please be seen. Now, how about motion to approve the agenda as you alter? Make that motion, Mr. Sir. Thank you, Dan. Court, court from Jeff.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner, um, Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Court. Six oh and one excuse. Citizens comments, if you have anything you'd like to tell them more, please come to the agenda. The agenda. What were you? State's your name. We have enough popping.
John Stewart.
Again.
Sure, we're all aware of the Robinson Dam and the issues with. Um, I'd like to make the ask, like, how many consider using their legal counsel to slow this process or maybe even stop it? Time being, it is town's resources and states trying to just get rid of it. Just consider it, please, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Willis, balance, Grandtown, Dipp City, Boyan. Uh, it's coming out, uh. Really hard to read this morning. Like you, uh. Have any west state drains on the eastern and southern drains? Those have been severely neglected for over.
Over six. Those, excuse me. I forgot to put my ears in this morning. Please be go. Can you hear me now?
No.
Was that?
No, I can't.
Okay. Yeah, um, there you go. Uh, getting a frog out of the throat. Uh, yeah, um.
Speaking of Monroy County.
Um, rehearsedly, uh, drinking, and I want to, uh. Have them, uh, address those strains on eastern and southern. Um, they've been severely neglected for over the past fifty six years. So hopefully we can get that addressed. And we'll be back for a second.
Thanks, Louis. Anyone else? Moving on to scheduled visitors, we have our green commissioner, Willie's here.
All right. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Willie Neill, and I'm Sheboygan County Grain Commissioner. Um. I'm here to give my annual report for twenty twenty five. Um, a little bit about myself, I grew up here in Sheboygan, um, my family farm on Campbell Road. Um. Right across the road from the first structure of the Little Black River watershed. Um, I spent most of my time running up and down the banks of the Little Black River watershed, therefore I am very familiar with. Um. The whereabouts and things going on with it over the last twenty years. Um. I took, I was appointed the position and then took over three months after. Uh, my beginning, the ice storm hit and I was thrown right into the depths of, uh, my position. I, uh. It's been a extremely fast learning curve for me. And, um, I'm doing my best to work my way through, uh. Navigating the, the legal end of things in my jurisdiction. Um, so as far as the drains, all drains are concerned. Um. From the ice storm, there's a big risk that we, I'm sure we all know about. Uh, with numerous fallen trees, uh, branches. Um. Everything impeding the drains themselves, along with the neglect they've spoken of over the last however many years. Um. Building up debris over long periods of time that have not been taken care of. Um. During the ice storm, I was given. For a very short period behind National Guard members to try to clean the Little Black River watershed. That attempt was very short as the, the day after we made plans to. Attempt to clean up. Uh, we received several inches of snow and was, uh, any work to be done was deemed too unsafe to. Try and perform anything with rising water levels and the icy and snowy banks. So nothing happened. Oh. Throughout the summer, I have been performing routine inspections of the major drains of the Little Black River watershed. And working with. USDA. Uh, NRCS and FSA. To try to come up with a, uh. Plan through the emergency watershed. Program. I'm not exactly sure where that stands, uh, at today. But. We've been trying to come up with a plan to be able to. Do some cleaning on the drains so that the water levels are. Impeded less. Not looking for perfect, but less than what they are now. Uh, I do continue to oversee the water levels of Black Lake. Uh, the water levels of Black Lake are set by the state. And. Uh. The water levels are set by the state. And then the dam at the Oburno. Uh, the Oburno hydraulic dam actually sets the water level. That is leaving Black Lake. I've met with several. Uh, property owners. Across the, across the county. Um, to try to come up with game plans for them for cleaning not only their properties, but also the drainage systems with on within their properties. Um. There's nothing I can necessarily do for them, but to try to redirect them into possible avenues that they could get assistance to help clean up. Um. My most recent. Event that I've been working on was the dam structure north of Little Black. Or on the north end of the Little Black River, north side of Campbell Road. Uh, several weeks ago, my father, who lives right across the road, started to notice that beavers had created a dam within the culvert. Started maintaining it, contacted, um, who I believed I needed to. Throughout that time, over the course of three weeks, the water rose sixteen feet. And we were trying to come up with a game plan of how to. Drain that water down to clear the debris. Uh, by the grace of God, hydraulic pressure built up enough and cleared the culvert itself. By sending the beaver dam through the culvert. And removing all the debris. My challenge is looking ahead for year twenty twenty six is because of the ice storm and the lack of maintenance on all ranges within the county. Um, a large volume of woody degree from fallen trees is in every single grain. Um, and as of right now, do not have any plans. Or funding to be able to clear those debris. Uh, moving forward, we'll be trying to. See new ways of funding sources. To be able to maintain. The structures within Sheboygan County. And try to design. A maintenance plan to be able to. Clean them and try to prevent blockages for the future. County Administrator, do you have anything to add?
I already know.
Okay.
Unless I forgot something.
Okay. Sorry, in conclusion, I would like to. Thank everyone who's helped me this year. Um. County Administrator's Office, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management Team. Townships, County Road Commission, M.D., the city of Sheboygan, and property owners all across Sheboygan County. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. How are you assigning responsibility for the Black River drain?
What's that?
How are you assigning responsibility for the Black River drain? For the players?
Say it one more time, and you can ask what you're saying.
For the people responsible for the Little Black River drain?
That is a very good question, and I do not have definitive answer on. My role in taking. Steps to try to. Help the situation. Is as of right now, completely on my own. Um. Because that's what my heart tells me needs to be done.
So you're working on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the grain? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good Brennan report. So board, we're down to item seven already administrator. Referring to the board discussion. Okay, refer. The whole business new business, we're down to ten A, twenty twenty six medical marijuana operation oversight grant. It's two on your right.
This is a grant that we apply for every year, um, the state allocates a certain amount, and we basically receive the money and we flow it through to the, um. Health department, um, the amount is up to twelve thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, so based on what they spend, we can get up to that much. First. Um, the grant is due null later than November tenth to the state, the application, um, so the recommendation is to approve a twenty twenty six medical marijuana. Upper grant oversight grant authorized the county administrators to sign and authorize any necessary.
Thank you for your pleasure, Gordon. I'll make that motion, sure. Sport.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes. Thank you, that's pass six oh and one answer. We're down the apportionary part.
Thank you for letting me present to you this morning the, um. County apportionment report and tax resolutions. There are three steps needed to take place for the collection of taxes. The board needs to adopt the resolution for the military. That will be led by the twenty twenty five, adopt the apportionment report, and then adopt the tax resolution. Each year, the board is required to direct the spread of taxes in terms of newer grades. The county apportionment report shows all information in a column and format. This report contains all the tax rates by all taxing authorities within one county. Um, the recommendation from the question was, um, to make the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen. Adopt the twenty twenty five portion of the report as presented, and then adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen. So that authorize the chair to sign, and we should be done in three separate actions by the board.
Thank you. Pleasure, Gordon. They do a separate. The first one for the accept the apportionment report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Sport.
No sport.
Thank you, Jeff. Madam Court.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner, um, Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes. Thank you, that's carried. All right, one of those doesn't have to be in this order?
Well. The, the board should, um, vote to adopt the tax resolution, the board, that county is going to allocate. And then adopt the res, the apportionment report.
Thank you. Clarification, the, the first, first motion was for revolution point five fifteen. Not the apportionment report.
Yeah, because we have, we have to adapt what they, what the board on the county wants to allocate before you adopt. Then having an apportionment report. And then.
We adopted the revolution.
Right.
The military residents.
Right, very nice, sure.
And then the second up would be the twenty five portion. I'll do the motions, sure. Pardon me?
I again will make the motion. For that.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman. Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes. Six oh and one on that. Third resolution twenty five sixteen, and author it to the chair and sign.
Make the motion once again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Second, yeah. Madam Court.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes. Thank you, Lynn.
All the forms are with Captain Vissano for the third inch here, and also, um, on a quick note, that there is, um, a valid issue for any of the schools on the ballot. So if that passes, we'll have to do an amended apportionment report. So I may say no again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to ten C, the fifty third Circuit Court referee services contract, it's thirteen on your right now. How's, sir?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Um, for those of you that might not know, I am, my name's Tyler Ortiz, I'm the fifty third Circuit Court, currently Court Director. Um, as always, I'm attorney. I'm heading into my third year serving this capacity. Um, I come before you today, I'm seeking a renewal of our referee contact. Um, we're in a third, three year agreement that comes to an end, that expires at the end of this year. Um, we utilize the services of referee attorney, Kyle Eagle. Um, he served as a referee since twenty twenty one, here in Sheboygan since twenty twenty three. Um, spent a licensed attorney since nineteen ninety nine. Um, in his role, um, he hears, uh, matters in domestic relation cases. Um, those are cases assigned by Judge Gauthier, who's here, um, Judge Visnam. Um, primarily custody, parenting time, child support. Um, and this allows my office and the courts, um, to write better service. Um, to members of the community that have disputes or hearings are mattered before the court. Um, they're heard more expeditiously. Um, this also allows us, there's court rules, timelines, deadlines, your hearings, decisions, this allows us to better comply with those rules. Um. We've been, uh, I've been pleased with the services, very pleased. Um, I spoke with Judge Gauthier, Judge Visnam, uh, they're in a group agreement and seeking, uh, approval of this request. Um. The prior agreement was for eight hundred dollars, uh, per day. We use him approximately two days per month. Um, we are seeking, seeking the increase, he's asked for nine fifty per day. Uh, this is on par, as I, I put in the blue sheet, I believe we call them. Um, he receives a, he serves in three other counties, he serves a thousand dollars per day in two of those counties. Uh, nine fifty in one of them, so we're just getting him on par, um, but he receives in other counties. Not to get too in the weeds on the funding in my office, but, uh, we, we are funded through the four D program. Um, so essentially matters pertaining to child support, which would be some of referee legal's work, is reimbursed through the four D program. Um, you get sixty six cents from the federal government for every dollar spent. Um, with that being said, uh, seeking approval, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I made the motion to approve fifty third Circuit Court contract for referee services, Tyler Legal, an author as chair of sign. Thank you, Miss.
I support it.
Thank you, townspeople.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yeah.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Straight regional ride, that's, MD, straight regional ride, twenty twenty six letter understanding, that's sixteen on your iPad.
This is our annual renewal of letter understanding with our partners on county's press and bone and on the training system. Our recommendations, motion to accept and authorize chair to sign the letter of understanding for twenty twenty six.
Pleasure, board. My. I'll support.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes. At two is carried six oh and one. We're down to E. Twenty six showering wage resolution. Elected official, that's twenty one on.
Um, this is, uh, the. Board of Appointments and Procedures Committee match, um, and their recommendation of the four percent increase for the elected officials. Um, and also for the base pay for the commissioners. Um, so the. Twenty twenty six has twenty seven pays in it versus twenty six, and so when the. Numbers are prepared, it's showing the four percent increase, but then there's a column that shows, so there's reflecting the twenty seven pays. Because by law, you're only supposed to be paid what the resolution says, so I wanted to make sure with the twenty seven pays, we didn't have to take it. Make it look like people by week they were getting a paycheck, so. Um, the recommendation is to adopt the twenty twenty six salary and wage resolution, elected officials number twenty twenty five seventeen, and authorize the chairs. You want me to try to explain that? Oh. It's a living nightmare.
So, if I may. You got enough information?
So, if I may, I know, uh. Commissioner, thanks for chair, uh. Myself, and, uh. Commissioner Warfield, uh, went through this, and we made the recommendation to do that, but I do want to point out that. The sheriff's wage was decreased, which is somewhat normal, uh, when you go in first year. And, uh, his wage will come up to, uh, there probably should be at this point because of that decrease catches them up. So his wage would be a hundred and five, eleven thousand and twenty six. And the rest of the electives, uh, do the four percent, so I just wanted to make that point. With that being said, I make the recommendation to adopt twenty twenty six salary and wage resolution for the elected officials twenty twenty five to seventeen. Not with a chair.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll support.
Thank you, Jeff. One, two, three, madam, pardon.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes. Thank you, board, that's carried six oh and one. We're down to F, ten F, Memco Community Corrections Grant Act.
This is a resolution support for Memco's fiscal year twenty six community correction grant. Uh, amount of two and twenty one thousand. For the counties in Oklahoma, in Sheboygan, Crawford, and Stewo County. This is a program that we've anticipated with Memco for, oh, probably at least twenty years now. Um, the recommendations include resolution twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty six community correction application, uh, of both East Michigan Council.
That's one that, uh, the judge has been in I check. Needing help. We've done that, uh, here, Mr. Chair. We've done that for twenty some years, and with that, I'll make the recommendation to approve the resolution. Twenty five, twenty twenty five, dash eighteen, FY twenty twenty six. With community corrections grant application, North East Michigan Council.
Thank you, Dan. I would support that, sorry. Thank you, Dave.
Commissioner Osmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes. Thank you, board, that's carried. We're down to G, ten G, zoning. Rezoning property west of West Kowski, P and C, that's behind them. Twenty seven on your right. Mr. Curris, can I?
Jim Walser, I'll be in survey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public who are present this morning. Uh, this is a zoning amendment application slash rezoning applications there, which are known as. Uh, for property addressed in eighteen four Marshall Park. Uh, approximately a mile south of the city line, about sixteen hundred feet, as the code applies north of the junction. You can see there, uh, on your screen, um, that is a, a rough depiction of the location of the subject property slated for rezoning. That strip of red, as many of you know, is our commercial corridor on North Straits Highway.
Carry around yet? There's new batteries.
Yeah, we replaced the batteries, just.
This is the new one. Speaking for myself, lots need our batteries recharged.
Yeah. Do the honors. That's awesome. So this next graphic just shows an aerial of the, uh, practical location of the subject property in Byron's, this, as I know it, is. Located in an established commercial corridor, there are a number of. Commercial or non. There are a number of commercial or non-rental uses in this area. The subject property lies just west of West Cowskey P and C. Oh, you know where that's located, of course. You may advance the slide, Jeff. As I indicated, sixteen hundred feet north of the junction. Now, the current zoning is commercial development. It is overwhelmingly zoned commercial development. This application is essentially an effort to create uniform zoning by rezoning the relatively small portions on the agriculture, forestry management to commercial, again, to render the entire property as commercial development. The portion that is currently zoned MAF is approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet width. As I indicated, this would create a uniform zoning district for the property. The applicant owner is intent on building and operating a storage facility. That project was approved by our planning commission in August. Thank you. And the rezoning application does conform with our master plan and future management. This is a cool job, doesn't it? It's gonna be this operator. It's on. Maybe it's the angle.
I'll put it there. We have the opposite emergency.
Thank you. You're gonna reach that there. There we go. I know. I only have a couple more slides. We get a good cloud workout. This slide depicts the current zoning of the subject property. You can see at the extreme west, that area shaded green within the blue bound. That is the portion of the subject property that is possibly for zoning. Again, rendered this a uniform, a single zoning district. We have a number of these configurations in the county. And the Board of Commissioners over the last four or five years has approved similar rezonings to, lack of a better way to bring it, clean these up. And it is our intent, as part of the master plan update process, to render these all uniform, as many as possible. Because situations like these can create development issues because the different zoning districts typically have different site development standards. So this would make it seem a bit difficult. So, all right, next slide, please. This is post rezoning. If this board approves the rezoning, again, it would render the entire property as commercial development. I indicated that the proposed rezoning comports with the master plan, the future land use map. You can see the subject property outlined in green. It lies within an area that the future land use map design needs as commercial and light industrial. Two of the factors that are arguably most important considering rezonings are if the rezoning comports with the master plan and if it is considered a spot zoning. In staff's estimation, this is not a spot zoning. This is simply an extension of a commercial zoning district. And again, as you can see there, it does comply with the master plan and future. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you have.
Pledge your board. So what's the people you read? Do the master plans, right?
Potentially. Potentially.
But I'll take care of the properties to the north.
The zoning districts, yes, that's right, Mr. Ostman. The zoning districts that have this dual zoning, if you will, are going to be hopefully cleaned up as they. We'll reach out to the respective property owners and let them know of the intent to do so and hopefully get their sign off, if you will. Yeah. Even though the board has approved a number of these, and as I said, the last several five years, there are still a number of supply of completed properties that extend all the way to South Street Highway. The mental township.
Are there going to be two properties that are going to be combined?
Yes, they have been combined, sir. That's, that new parcel idea is already that's.
You know the strip. You know if that's in the Downtown Development Authority District?
It is not.
What's the other parcels are?
To the north, I believe, yes. I, I, I'm pretty sure they are not in the DDA, but pretty sure, not a hundred percent.
Right. You can check it out.
Yeah. I'll get with the DDA, because if that strip that you're rezoning, just fine, you can rezone any parcel. Regardless of whether it's in DDA or not.
Right.
If it's if it's not in the DDA and it's combined with parcels that are in the DDA, the DDA is going to have to amend their legal distribution of the downtown development. Nothing, you have to. I'll get with the DDA. I'll make sure you determine whether it's in there or not.
I can tell. I'll tell that to me as well.
Okay. So, yeah.
Be more assured if the motion was providing it does not include the DDA.
No, it really, it really had nothing to do with it other than for the DDA. For zoning purposes, it's fine, clean. With the Downtown Development Authority, they may have to amend.
Pledge your board. Recommendation on the planning. Sure, I'll make the motion if we approve it.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll support.
Thank you, Tom. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike, that's carried six oh and one, thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to H, Impact Solution, Countywide Central Services Indirect Cost Plan Contract, that's forty-two on your iPad.
The county prepares like cost allocation plan annually in order to seek advantage of getting indirect costs reimbursed through grants, particularly in the court. But any grants that are eligible for it. MGT, they used to be MGT of America, changed their name, apparently they merged. But they've done it for several years, the last five years, it's been, the year has been seventy-five. Seventy-three hundred, excuse me. And they're recommending a new three-year agreement, seventy-five hundred or twenty-five, seventy-eight hundred and twenty-six, and eighty-one hundred and twenty-seven. So the recommendation is to approve the three-year agreement with MGT Impact Solutions LLC and Monocle. Total amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred to provide the countywide central services indirect cost plans for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and authorize the chair.
And sure everybody understand?
I make the motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll support.
I would support it. I would.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
No, yes.
Great, we're carried six oh and one. We're down to I, ten I, it's Lincoln Area High School Request for Delegation of School Plan Review and Inspection.
Annual request, which would be rules, the county to perform any construction or permanent projects at the school might under J three twenty-six. Recommendation, motion authorized chair to sign, request for delegation to the this request, Inspector authority.
I remember that's not done in state as as a hand in it.
I'll make that motion.
I would support that. Thank you, Jeff and Steve.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yeah.
Thank you, board, that's carried six oh and one. We're down to Board of Canvas Position, that's fifty-three on your iPad, there's a handout. The clerk can submit a ruling. Madam Clerk, there's something to read.
This is the Board of County Campusers Positions. The terms of Dale Giddings, Democrat, and Kathy Stone, Republican, on Board of County Campusers, expires on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Pursuant to MCL one six eight twenty-four C. We contacted the county chair of each political party and requested names of the nominees for the party's expiring seat on the board. The law states that each party was to provide the county clerk with three nominees. Following names were submitted by the Republican Party, Catherine Stone. The following names were submitted by the Democrat Party, Dale Giddings, Leonard Page. The terms of these appointments are four years expiring, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And MCL one six eight twenty-two four C requires the county board of commissioners to fill the two vacancies on the board by electing a Republican member and a Democrat member. Was submitted, Michigan election laws, that's why I said, when you board of commissioners do ballots by filing these seats, the ballots will be, will be provided at this meeting. So if you could please fill out your vote, and then I could tell the Monocle member to fill out.
Over Republicans, Kathy Stone, and the Democrat, you don't need to.
Thank you.
No, thank you. If we pass it down to the clerk.
Okay. Looks like six, well, Catherine Stone, for the Republican, and Democrat, Dale Giddings received two, and Leonard Page received four.
So Democratic.
So.
Leonard Page?
Yes.
And Kathy Stone for the Republican?
Yes.
What else do you need, Madam Clerk?
That is all, thank you so much.
Thank you, we're down to eleven, citizens' comments on the board. Board member comments, Business Finance Meeting, November twelve. What's it, what do we want to comment on that?
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, bring it on Tuesday. It's the holiday recognition hour.
Make the question, I will not be able to make that meaningful.
All right.
Request to be excused.
Okay. Did you make your payment to the board chairman?
Sure.
To allow that?
Not ever.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
My errors.
Other board member comments?
Yeah. His report.
Comment being moved because November eleventh is Veterans Day. And so I just want to make that clear. And the second thing, I just want to men down that way for, we had a meeting on the twenty-first in reference to the Board Appointments Procedures. And after that meeting, I asked how she would research from nineteen forty-seven to nineteen fifty-five in the board minutes, if there was anything about the fact that Robert Slakes being memorialized when it was two World War II veterans. And within twenty-four hours, Doug sent me an email, he found it. July eleventh, nineteen fifty-one, this boy took it up. And then the following meeting in August, they passed the resolution to rename those lakes, but I just want to thank them for that quick response, you've been twenty-four hours.
Amazing. Having a board supervisor, then.
It was the board supervisor. Sheriff was Ed Wood?
Used to have a big, big, long table, they all sat around that table. Who was the chairman?
Amy?
It was, well, before Amy, but it was motion by Supervisor R Dagwell.
Roland Dagwell, that's R.
And so that was Tuesday, July eleventh, nineteen fifty. On August eighth, nineteen fifty, they passed the resolution.
A lot of people on here there.
I wasn't. But what's given this professionalism and doing that stuff.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Any other comment, board member comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Beth, for your hard work in finding that. We got it, we got it moved, moved.
What I learned, the most useful meeting on the D N R, uh, with the U S system was kind of not being resolved very well. And it's similar. That resolution, uh, Douglas County Board of Supervisors, which supervisors at that time. To memorialize Houston lakes in honor of the World War Two veterans. This is patently rejected by the D N R. Nothing to do. Also provided a copy of the resolution passed by the board. Two weeks ago. Requesting that we're still legislators, consider memorializing this. And also had no impact. No effect under plans to move forward. Guess the message is pretty clear to me, but it's difficult to articulate that in a public meeting, like. I hope the message was very clear. They have no intent of doing anything other than. Removing Robert's Lake and potentially Becky Cochran Lake. Believe their position on what was not stated was that these two individuals were not buried there on that site. So they're for the memorialization. On behalf of board, born in nineteen fifty, but also in the state of Michigan, are recognizing it and changing the names on. The maps to Cochran Lake. Cocking Roberts. Really does not seem to matter to them. They suggested that perhaps. The citizens group over a thousand, now people along to the basement page here, attempting to. Protect and memorialize these lakes in honor of these two dead. But the best option for them was perhaps to. Uh, request a restraining order from the judge here in Sheboygan County to cease the citizens' plan to. Bid the project, remove all of them. In the first week of the. The citizen group commented at the meeting that they. Were likely to seek such a motion. In the district court here. I know that they're trying to raise funds. And hire an attorney, and I believe we heard a request this morning. One of our citizens that perhaps the board should utilize an immunity resource. And counsel to. To post such a. Temporary restraining order against the removal of the name. Do you have anything you wanted to add to that, Tom? You were there, your perspective on all of them?
Yeah, um. The timeline is not very good for. The county or anybody, citizens. Their their plan is is to remove this dam in July of twenty twenty six. And they're. They're not going to stall. That's what they want to do. Set a cost of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They'll replace the dam. There's three options. They can remove the dam. They can restore the dam, which is about. One point five million, or they can rebuild it. It's two point six million.
Got a free border, but two feet.
It's not very big.
I don't know.
I know.
I might add, Chairman and I, people out looking at the beginning. The name itself. It's a sounding concrete structure. You always wish for that. Yes, concrete structures extremely sound. Couple of disturbing things that came out of it, getting an army in. From my perspective, one was the comment from the D N R themselves. Could they do not when asked about the ruins that nest on that lake? On Robert's Lake and what would become of those ruins? Their response is, we are not. Wanted to just have to move on, but find another lake. They won't die, maybe see the mood.
Right.
So a little bit, little bit taken back with that approach.
Solid state landing.
Really not safe with the rest of the world. It's really quite disturbing. The other point is that they have conducted zero maintenance. For years.
Yeah.
And they acknowledge that in the meeting, they became. Frustrated, I think, Tom, would you agree that it became frustrating when I asked questions about the sea, dealt with the maintenance? And the only response, there's not a response that we did this on the sea. And we did this on that one. Only response was, I've got two texts and then thirty nine counties between us, so I don't have time. And or is not that correct, sir? And there's not been any maintenance done, and the maintenance is strictly removing vegetation on a dormant cell. Lower vegetation and from the beavers, we got into this still work. Like I tell you from sticking my head down in there Sunday afternoon, it's still is full of woods. Um, the interesting thing, and I think. Important thing to consider is that. The actual. Basin of the two lakes and water that falls within that area. And a hundred year flood event. Would not top the earth and impact.
Yeah. Because it's all considered as well.
It's a small enough little watershed there.
Yeah.
That even with a hundred year flood, I would assume, Jeremy, if I know better than. That's probably three or four inches of rain in a couple hours. Same once a century. And that still cannot top. Top the earth and impact. And that would remind you that unless you top the earth and then back with the water. Probably losing the earth and back version of that. There really isn't any reason at all for them to do this. Um, they're anxious to get grant money, but if there's grant money available. Interestingly enough, one of the. Things that they were throwing out of times of difficulty. Chop that approaches. But one was, you know, if somebody went out with a potential, they do have grant money in an amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Due to. Due to removal, the replacement of the culvert there. They said the citizens group. They keep off the county, and the citizens group for the county. Would post a bond with the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And in the event that they might consider going ahead and looking at. Doing something different, but they don't want. Their main focus is to capture this three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to carry them now. And if they can't get it, then quicken up and get it out there, they want that grant money. Therefore, there are difficulties to cover that three hundred and sixty thousand dollar line going. In the event that. The dam had, that they can do some more research and if they find a dam, then they have to do a group, then everything is great.
Maybe some.
Left handed way of doing things, but.
Maybe some of the people making the decisions at the state. I'd be in that same job.
They've lost their way, and I hate to say it, but that's what I said in my comments, is you really seem to have lost your way. The dam was, ask yourself why this dam was originally built. In nineteen forty eight, or prior to nineteen forty eight. It was determined that. Without the dam, Cochran Lake has always existed, it springs that. Robert's Lake was a very shallow. Now, we're gonna use the word lake because of, you know, a loose use of that word. But a shallow water area, it. Fish resided in, but there was constant wear. In nineteen forty eight, the D N R was looking for recreational opportunities. They felt the mission was to buy fishing opportunities and protect nature in northern Michigan, particularly. And that was noted. So they recognized it by putting a very small structure. On this grid coming out of Cochran Lake, they could create Robert's, even Robert's Lake and make it a. Lake that would support water. The D N R made, that was their mission in the nineteen fifties, was to provide recreational opportunities. Which I would think would be very helpful to the city of Lake County, something like. But they've lost their way. And they've now become a bureaucracy that. It's lost its.
Yeah, this, Robert's Lake is a fisheries lake. These guys are all. The Fisheries Division. I mean, no. Once they take that dam, it'll probably no longer be a fisheries lake. We'll lose all the fish. Not only to mention being able to canoe or kayak in there. A lot of citizens and. People that, you know, fish by kayaks out there, and that's all going to go bad. They. They're in a position that. They're they're someone up against, well, they have two hundred and twelve dams in state of admission that the D N R responsible for. They're all aging. So their their position is to get rid of all these dams.
Sure, the liability involved.
Yeah.
Anywhere in the state.
Sure. Instead of trying to repair them or fix them, or they're not even trying to seek money. To repair these dams. It is. Want change the environmental structure, what's out there today. So they they don't even know, they don't know what's going to happen to Robert's Lake. They. They believe it'll just go back to a ball of people. They think it, there might still be about two feet of water in there once that dam is removed, but they don't know for sure.
No, they don't.
They don't know what effect it will have on Cochran.
They're not going to.
They're tired of saying that it won't have an effect. The two are.
They think it's one out.
Two are tied together. They want out, they want out, that's what I mean. I think they're. I can see both sides. Kind of consume whether there's a necessity to the state's fishing, or not, they have to finance the insurance and tourism games going forward. That's really on the state. Let's say you probably do money. Maybe it's creating a new department. Know this conservative is right. With a new department, the advantage of dams can take it out and away from fisheries. And then the fund then. And the problem is, it's not interested funding. But it it clearly this dam is being swept, and it's called a dam and. Kind of that's.
Yeah, it's called a board.
Yeah, but yeah, they they clearly just want to wipe wipe these off the books. How many did they say they were talking about?
Two hundred and twelve.
Yeah. Then in perfect world, they give them all two hundred and twelve. Um, but, um, I I don't see that as being their purpose, when I frankly, uh, a little bit taken back. We're not, we're not even doing this. Recently, or what we did in the nineteen fifties. Frankly, it's a two word message. That I received. I wouldn't split, leave it at that.
So to kind of bring this around, does this board want to own a dam, or do they want to take on the state?
I would think we would want to take on the state before we want to own a dam. Um, and I recognize taking on the state and.
I bet you they transfer that land out of ownership to the county.
They made that infinitely clear. They personally put them down, not in the first meeting, in the second meeting, I think they probably referenced. Yeah, they were, in a perfect world, when they, unlike the city, is the county buy it for a dollar. Putting money on the county back. The question is, is it really truly a market?
Yeah.
I don't know that it did. Um, they're, Tom mentioned their totals here. For metro construction, one point nine million for a total rehabilitation or replacement, two point seven million dollars. That's a huge number. And when questioned about those numbers. Or question as to their ability to perform these estimates. They'll tell you that you're spot on on your estimate. And then five minutes later in the conversation, they confidently support me here. They start talking about how their estimates for the most recent project, cornwall money, had been double and triple what they had anticipated. So they want to say we cannot. They straight out asked what I would like to see, and I said, I can't represent. I'm not here to represent the board of divisions. I'm here to represent myself as a one. And none of us. And but, um. What I would very much like to see them do is to stop and take a breath. There's other alternatives out there. In fact, at this point, I believe Chairman or. Commissioner Claremont, I expected the same thing out of this meeting that I did. Because when we had been told that the D N R had. A new proposal. It was to have been brought to this meeting on the twenty third, and they did not put anything in for any. Same three, there are other ways we do this. You can actually deep in Cochran Lake by removing. You know, removing the soil that's in the basin already. You can come down to the stream bed and not actually have a change in relocation, all kinds of things they can do. But to accept these numbers when they've been off fifty percent on the most recent local project, cornwall money. Their numbers have no credibility to me. And I I would ask what it was, I would like to see you just delay the bid opening that they set for November first. And allow some breathing in here for some people to come forward with other ideas. I think the community group would like to believe that they can muster time, money, and then take something like this. Whether that's within their warehouse all or not. Um. And if the county can look at what, anything we can do, what might be.
The county owns underwater part, you know that. So it's certainly being incorporated into that.
I think the citizens group ideally, I did some music through your ears when people start talking about like this. They would like to see it turned into a memorial veterans park, so to speak. A little walkway around the lakes, some plaques that talk about Cochran and Roberts, and perhaps our other vets here in Sheboygan County. And, uh, you know, an interesting. So, I'm sorry you're taking up so much of your time. I just hate to take to bring this up, but I found it terribly interesting. Uh, there's another lake in Sheboygan County that's named after a veteran, a veteran of the Civil War. Of all, it's never owed anybody. How many people in this room are familiar with the history of that?
That's totally spring bed.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh. To name lakes and recognize veterans with a lake in northern Michigan, particularly. And I will say this about Cochran and Robert's Lake. Do not have homes around them. Do not have any upwind undergrounds in there. Water is as clear as anything you can buy on a bottle in a store. And read this meeting, and it's a very unique landscape, a beautiful piece of property. You mentioned recreational, I went out Sunday, there was a guy in a kayak. I would have thought he was fishing. When he got closer, he wanted to know if I was the guy wanting to tear the dam down. Because I had paper, measuring stick, again, and, uh. I'm actually, I got it, like, saved it. But he was hunting and duck hunting, and had a shotgun, and he told me he'd been doing that since he was a child. And that.
Yeah. And there's since that was changed.
And it it just, it. It's just difficult. It's hard to understand. Why the D N R would not want to engage in further discussion about.
Well, this, at this point, it sounds like we need an injunction to slow the decision with. Of the state down.
We we do, and I I think that's what, uh, John Stewart asked earlier, as if. The group is trying to locate an attorney. I I don't want to speak for the group, I don't mind. Just a commissioner and not a part of that group, but. I mean, I believe your intent, the group's intent is to give an attorney to. Prepare documents for the branch. Consultantness, um, locating an appropriate attorney and then financing the attorney. Uh, my experience with, uh. Injunctions to stop a project is.
I hate to say this, but we're. We put a dog party. Let's tell you our priorities.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree on that. Mr. Sheriff, I think, Ray. Uh, I don't know if I'd be out of line to ask that our civil council does. Uh, research, see if that is possible.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
And we have support?
I have, he has support. He has.
We've got a motion and support on the floor. It's regarding Cochran, Robert.
And that would be to direct our, uh, council to investigate.
And the supporter is a civil engineer.
Shouldn't matter at the end of the day.
It does.
So if I may, I asked, also, I mean. Because Steve's background, civil engineer. If there are options, really, just leave it as is. I mean, if it looks like it's a sound. Dam, if you want to call it that, which is. You make it so, the concrete structure, no question, I don't think you can be a dam engineer or somebody with a state permission can be used. I do not. To to stamp that. However. It's the embankment that would become questionable. Now, it was built in nineteen forty eight. You can make a pretty safe assumption. That they used local materials for the embankment, and there is clay in there. So if there was clay available. Anybody would have known to build without clay, which is the same. Um, there really, there's a cheap fit. And that would be to come in and on the front slope, that's the slope that the water comes against. To put geotex style fabric and some riprap rocks the size of basketballs, or smaller. On there, just to keep rodents from trying to dig into the embankment, because as they work their way in, they allow water to penetrate. There's a freeze thaw cycle with the water of the winter. It expands, creates a waterway. Next thing you know, you have water moving from the impounded area through the embankment and tearing the embankment apart. Obviously, vegetation should be removed from it. The state's been telling themselves that every five years forever. We're stuck going out of there and it's over and I. I'm not, if a dam were to then. Four years old, so I guess I can't say that. But, uh, yeah, it it. There's obviously a reason the state doesn't want a dam. Because.
They don't want to own it.
The dams can be a durable by.
Sure.
I just would question whether this one is, and I would question that probably before they did all that clearing. That they did of all the trees in there and all the logging trucks that were taken back and forth across the structure. I would have thought that the state would have, as the owner of the dam. Would have done some soil borings at the cost of probably twenty five, thirty five thousand dollars in that range. To determine once and for all. What's in that person and bank out and built, and what it's today's quality is. And interestingly enough, they made no attempt to do that when they did all that clearing and drove countless. Loads of logs back and forth across that dam. Did they do that because they knew they were going to tear it down?
Yeah.
I can't answer that question, but it does, it begs the question.
Makes you wonder, though.
It sure does. Um, well, you know, I I I think the best thing that could be done is. Probably would be. If it were practical for the county to just exonerate Cochran.
Let's, uh.
But you don't want to do that till we know really what we. We don't want to get a.
We've got a motion on the floor, or we need to act on it?
Yes, we do.
All right. Madam Burke, would you call the role?
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Thank you, that's carried six oh and one. So, uh, Mr. Administrator, who called, who want to add for us? Thank you, sir. Okay, anything else from board member comment? We're going to go into a closed session. Uh, Mike, we go.
Mr. Wood, motion made by myself, seconded by.